The Mandan Planning and Zoning Commission meeting for October 28th order. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Langin?
Here.
Commissioner Huber?
Here.
Commissioner Mutter?
Here.
Mayor Freilich?
Here.
Commissioner Enfeld?
Here.
Commissioner McLean?
Here.
Commissioner Bookmiller?
Here.
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Commissioner Hammond?
Here.
Commissioner Gardner?
Here.
Commissioner Horn? Chair Robinson?
Next item, we have the approval or we have a copy of the minutes from September 23. Any questions or changes? Move approval.
I'll second.
Motion, Smith. Okay, thank you. Motion by Commissioner Smith, second by Commissioner Hammond to approve the minutes of September 23. Questions? None, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Langin?
Yes.
Commissioner Huber?
Yes.
Commissioner Mutter?
Yes.
Mayor Freilich?
Yes.
Commissioner Enfeld?
Yes.
Commissioner McLean?
Yes.
Commissioner Bookmiller?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Hammond?
Yes.
Commissioner Gardner?
Yes.
Chair Robinson?
Yes. The motion is passed. We'll move on to the first of our public hearings. Item number one, considering a request for a final plat for the Bueller subdivision. Andrew?
Good evening, Chair Robinson, Commissioners. If I may, before I get into this, just make a brief update regarding tonight. I will be taking off after number three, and you'll be left in the good, capable hands of Kim Rippele and Nancy to wrap up the meeting for item number four. We were double booked this evening. If you do happen to have any availability after tonight's meeting, there will be an open house for a planning study taking place along Mandan's Third Street corridor from about the intersection of Third Street and the Strip, all the way to the municipal golf course, the two-mile stretch, will be at Spirit of Life from six to eight. So that's where I have to high-tail it out to. If you'll allow me, I'll head back to Bueller subdivision. On your screen is the location map for this item, which is a follow-up from the last month's meeting. Previously, the board reviewed a preliminary plat, and their group is back with a final plat for the subdivision. This is the project that facilitates the land transfer between the Bueller family and the city of Mandan pursuant to the flood risk reduction project that the Lower Heart Water Resource District is pursuing. The final plat would be 11.14 acres in size. It's one lot and one block. There is no development planned for this property. It is being used as an instrument to convey property and combine into one. We did notice this item for a public hearing at this evening's meeting regarding the area that the property is in. It's fairly undeveloped to the northwest and south, with the wastewater plant to the north and the residential district, R7 and Lakewood subdivision, to the east. In terms of public outreach, we did receive comment that prior to any development, of course, none being planned, but prior to any development in the future, a cultural survey is recommended to be conducted by the recommendation of the State Historic Preservation Office. And I did provide some comments regarding progress that has been made with the ownership transfer. It was realized that the city portion was in city limits and the Bueller portion was not in city limits, and the city commission did consider and recommend approval of the first consideration of an ordinance to exclude that one and a half acres so that when it's all said and done, the Bueller's 11.14 is not in the corporate boundary of Mandan. And that project would go back, or that portion of the project would return to the city commission next week for a final consideration. I've included some findings of fact regarding the plat, which I can pull up onto the screen as well. And our recommendation is to approve the final plat for Bueller subdivision. Do you have any questions for me?
With none, at this time, I'll open it up for public comment or questions. Taking comments or questions on item number one. Again, any questions? With none, I'll close and return it back to the commission.
Mr. Chairman, as we discussed at the preliminary plat hearing, this is a win-win for both the city and the landowner, and I would recommend approval, or move approval, of the final plat for Bueller subdivision.
Motion by Commissioner Smith, second by Commissioner Bookmiller to recommend approval of the final plat for the Bueller subdivision. Any questions? None, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Langin?
Yes.
Commissioner Huber?
Yes.
Commissioner Mutter?
Yes.
Mayor Freilich?
Yes.
Commissioner Enfeld?
Yes.
Commissioner McLean?
Yes.
Commissioner Bookmiller?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Hammond?
Yes.
Commissioner Gardner?
Yes.
Chair Robinson?
Yes. Motion is passed. Second item for a public hearing, consider a final plat for Mandan Industrial Park, 14th edition. Andrew?
Chair Robinson and Commissioners, another follow-up from our previous month's meeting. This item was in front of you with the preliminary plat. The final plat would combine two properties and some vacated right-of-way into one 6.12 acre lot. At your previous meeting, you also considered a zone change, that portion of the subdivision that was included in Sunview Heights. I'll zoom in. On the east end, along Old Red Trail, would be rezoned from that agricultural district to the MA industrial district. The applicant, Central Bottling Incorporated, is pursuing a small building addition and is doing some survey work as part of that to have it all cleaned up by the time it is done. So, the entire property would be platted into a one-lot, one-block subdivision. That would be 6.12 acres in size, as I stated. The city commission did approve the preliminary plat and the first consideration of the rezone ordinance, that it's October 15th meeting, and the next step is for it to go for the final plat. Staff has included some findings of fact related to the application, and we did notice it with neighbors and the Mandan news. Our recommendation is to approve the final plat for Mandan Industrial Park, 14th edition. I could take any questions if you have them, or applicants, engineers here as well. Thank you.
Any questions for Andrew? With none, I'll open it up for public comments or questions on item number two, Mandan Industrial Park, 14th edition. Again, we are taking comments on item number two. With none, I'll close and return it back to the commission.
I feel like this is a win-win also. I move to recommend approval of the final plat for this property.
We have a motion by Commissioner Mutter, second by Commissioner Enfeld. Motion is to recommend approval of the final plat as presented. Any questions? With none, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Langin?
Yes.
Commissioner Huber?
Yes.
Commissioner Mutter?
Yes.
Mayor Freilich?
Yes.
Commissioner Enfeld?
Yes.
Commissioner McLean?
Yes.
Commissioner Bookmiller?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Hammond?
Yes.
Commissioner Gardner?
Yes.
Chair Robinson?
Yes. And motion is passed. Third public hearing, consider a zone change from MA industrial to CB commercial for Helbling 7th edition. Andrew?
Chair Robinson, Commissioners, something new to talk about this evening. I have a location map on the screen for this property. For a little bit of background, the applicant, Helbling Land Company, requested some development review. That was with the city commission's scope, right-of-way vacation and a minor plat, two items that are taken care of by that board. With the minor plat and vacation, it was desired to have a lot combination on the property that currently contains the stage stop, restaurant, bar. And as you can see on our zoning map records, do reflect a combination of zoning, CB commercial and MA industrial on it. For any lots to be combined, they have to pick one district to be in. The zone change would place the entire property in the CB commercial district. So, the city commission did, and it's October 15th, consider the minor plat for Helbling 7th edition, which I do have included in your agenda packet. You will see that it consolidates about eight or 10 different lots from Helbling 2nd Edition, which was a 1980 subdivision, into what would be two lots. So it cleans that up quite a bit. There was a portion of right-of-way Forest Street that was planned, although never constructed, signed, or improved, so you wouldn't really know about it. It would have been Fifth Avenue Southeast, which is kind of, would have been on the west side of that development. So this request essentially got rid of any of the right-of-ways in there, replaced them with access easements, and reduced the number of lots from probably seven to 10 lots down to two. So a good win-win for cleaning that area up. But of course, with the plat, combining those two zoning designations, the ordinance is required, which is within this board's scope. So, we do have a draft ordinance included. You will find that it does state both the rezone from MA district as well as places lots into the CB and MA district. If you'll see from the location map, this right-of-way sort of straddles and falls between a mix of MA and CB. So that portion of the vacated right-of-way that is on the north end in line with the CB lot would be put into the CB district, and that south majority of it would go into an MA district. Again, kind of a cleanup item here, and our office is recommending approval of the ordinance to rezone that property to be in the CB and MA districts. Do you have any questions for me?
Questions for Andrew. Any questions for Andrew? None, I'll open it up for public comments or questions on item number three. Taking comments or questions on item number three, Helbling 7th edition. With no comments, I'll close, return it back to the commission. It seems like all items have been met, so I'll move to recommend approval of the zone change for Helbling 7th edition. We have a motion by Commissioner Enfeld, second by Commissioner Hammond. Motion is to recommend approval of the zone change for Helbling's 7th edition. Any questions? With none, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Langin?
Yes.
Commissioner Huber?
Yes.
Commissioner Mutter?
Yes.
Commissioner, or Mayor Freilich?
Yes.
Commissioner Enfeld?
Yes.
Commissioner McLean?
Yes.
Commissioner Bookmiller?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Hammond?
Yes.
Commissioner Gardner?
Yes.
Chair Robinson?
Yes. Motion is passed. And next item is item number four, consideration of Arrived 2050, the 2025 to 2050 Metropolitan Transportation Plan.
Chair Robinson and Commissioners, allow me to introduce Kim Rippele, transportation planner with the Bismarck Mandan MPO. She and Jason Carby with HDR Consultants will take this item and any questions related to it. Thank you. Thanks, Andrew.
Thank you, Chair Robinson.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, good evening. As Andrew has already stated, my name is Kim Rippele. I am a transportation planner with the Bismarck Mandan Metropolitan Planning Organization. I am here basically to introduce our consultant, Jason Carby, with HDR, who's online with us, and also to provide a little bit of information about the Arrived 2050 Metropolitan Transportation Plan, too. The Arrived 2050 is a major planning document that assists the MPO, our local jurisdictions, which the city of Mandan is one, and the North Dakota DOT in envisioning and preparing for the future of the local transportation network. More specifically, it helps the local municipalities use federal transportation dollars to improve the network through expansion or through maintenance. We've been working on the project for a year and a half. Jason's presentation will provide you an outline of how we prepared for the study, how public input was used throughout, and what overarching goals, development themes, and grant projects we hope to pursue upon possible acceptance of this master plan. The MPO advertised this meeting as a public hearing, and either Jason and I, or I, would be happy to stand for any questions at the conclusion of his presentation. Tonight, the MPO is requesting the board consider a motion to recommend approval of the plan through adoption by resolution to the city commission. The resolution was also included in your packet for your information, I believe. And right now, I will turn it over to Jason Carby of HDR for his presentation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kim. Good evening. If I can share some slides if somebody will give me. It says I need to screen share while the other participant is sharing, so if somebody stops sharing, maybe I can share?
Well, that, Jason.
There we go. Thank you. Appreciate it. All right. So, yeah, the agenda tonight really was to give you all kind of an idea of what the content of the plan was, talk a little bit about the process that we went through to get here, and answer any questions anyone might have. I'm not going to go through this whole list, but here's kind of the summary of the 11 chapters, and this is really the content that we'll touch on tonight as we go through this brief presentation. Kim touched on this, so the Metropolitan Transportation Plan is one of, basically the four kind of core products that the MPO needs to kind of put together and maintain. And it's updated every five years. It's federally required, but again, looks out through 20-plus years, so we're looking out now through the year 2050. But, yeah, it's really about looking at what we call the multimodal system, you know, travel, freight, bicycle, pedestrian, transit, all of it, and how it all operates together for mobility and safety for the region. And then how can we start looking at our needs today? The needs that we're anticipating are going to emerge in the future, and start kind of prioritizing which projects, you know, make the most sense for us and which ones we can afford. So we do have that fiscally constrained term that we're using here, and that really means, you know, looking at all sources of funding, what can make that fiscally constrained list? And then there's going to be, I think Kim touched on this a little bit, there's a list of other projects that are good ideas that we don't necessarily fit on that list, but we will continue to advance and say, this is a good idea, it's a, you know, it's a priority for the region. Can we look for other sources of funding, like grants and things like that, that Kim mentioned? So, one of the foundations of this was really going through, you know, identifying what the overall regional goals were and looking at objectives and performance measures. And so, there's a few different areas that kind of informed this overall vision for the plan. Federal requirements talk about, you know, several areas that the plan needs to emphasize. North Dakota DOT also has a long-range transportation plan that really affects particularly the state highway system, and so we wanted to make sure that we had a plan that was in alignment with that plan. And then kind of a lot of really locally tailored, you know, through interactions with the, you know, planners and engineers with each of the cities and counties that are part of the MPO area, and just identifying some performance measures and targets that really reflected that vision, and then how we could kind of use this overall framework to help kind of develop the plan. So we did have eight goal areas for the 2050 plan, based on a lot of public input and talking with, you know, what each of, you know, what Mandan staff and Bismarck staff and Lincoln and everybody kind of saw is the framework that made the most sense. And also, some of these are kind of federal perspectives that we need to make sure we maintain to stay eligible for federal funding. So, safety, economics, resiliency, efficiency, and reliability, maintaining the system that we've got out there today, you know, encouraging us to be forward-thinking, thinking about new technologies and ways to do more with, you know, the system and the infrastructure that we have already. Active transportation and transit, and then equity, just making sure we make decisions that, you know, kind of provide equal benefits and equal potential impacts. There we go. So, public engagement was a big part of this, and hopefully some of you all got to get, you know, involved with all the different events, both online and in person that we had. Had a project website throughout, and lots of online engagement opportunities through that website. We had surveys, kind of online, kind of on-demand public meetings, so people could go to the public meeting, you know, when it was open during that kind of engagement period, you know, on their own terms, when they wanted to and kind of at the pace that they wanted to. We also had some in-person public open houses, and I'll talk a little bit about those on the next slide. And then lots of engagement, we had kind of a focus group with stakeholders, you know, folks from different agencies that kind of give input on what they thought the transportation system really needed to be. Had a steering committee that was made up of technical staff from all of the participating jurisdictions, and then the TAC and Policy Board. Oh, and really quick, public open houses, we had kind of three different milestones that were important. We had kind of that first that was later last year, that was basically input on issues. We had one meeting each in Bismarck and in Mandan for that one. Our second milestone was last spring, and we had input on kind of some folks' ideas on strategies. That one was online and in Bismarck. And then, on the 3rd of July, we had Art in the Park. We had input kind of on some draft, kind of some of the project concepts, and that was, you know, obviously in Mandan, and had an online component to that, too. And I will add that we did have an online comment period on the draft plan that ended last week. Sorry, now I'm going to continue. And then we had a chapter that was really just about summarizing kind of where the, you know, where the communities are today, how much we've historically grown, just some commuting statistics, population statistics, things like that, kind of that, you know, the lay of the land of where we're at as a community. There's a very, and if you've had a chance to look at the report, it's, we've gone into a lot of depth on a lot of different data, and one of the big areas was kind of that summary of all the different perspectives on the existing multimodal system, you know, looking at safety, you know, looking for congestion, freight movement, bicycle and pedestrians, transit, you know, maintenance and asset conditions. And so, there's a lot of data. I'm not going to go into a ton of detail. I could talk about this for, you know, 45 minutes, an hour, but I'm not going to put you all through that, but I will answer any questions you do have. But, you know, we looked at safety, looking not only at trends across the metro area, but also looking for locations of high crashes, you know, what would be the strategies that might kind of help mitigate some of those. Also, looking at congestion. We've got some congestion today. We anticipate more congestion in the future, and I'll talk a little bit more about that on the next slide. But, you know, essentially, we kind of summarized it in all these different, you know, perspectives, whether it's pavement and bridge conditions, cross-area travel did, we've heard themes, you know, for several plans in a row about maybe some barriers to north-south travel on the Bismarck side, but also some east-west travel barriers on the Mandan side. And just, you know, talking about transit and, you know, where ridership levels are compared to before 2020, you know, the opportunity for, you know, dealing with congestion issues and things like that. So, you know, kind of an overall summary there. But again, that was kind of the existing system. We also looked to the future, and, you know, you all are part of a, you know, growing, you know, community on both sides of the river, and just looking at what those growth patterns mean for how much more travel and growth we might have in the future. And so, we're anticipating about a 40% growth in jobs and households and population by the year 2050. And then we looked at where that growth might happen, and you can see here, we're looking at how households would grow and where, and then how jobs would grow. And so, all of that's part of what we call a kind of a traffic forecasting and modeling process. And so, this graph shows kind of those high-growth corridors. So the darker and the thicker those lines are, the more traffic we're anticipating in the future, that more growth. And so, kind of summarize that, and this was kind of our starting point for, okay, we kind of know where we're at today, where we're going to go in the future, what are some of those, those strategies, what are the trends going on, you know, what should we consider as potential solutions, and start kind of identifying the short-term and those long-term potential fixes and strategies that we're going to really promote in the region to try to address some of those safety and mobility issues. And so, looked at all kinds of different types of approaches, whether it's, you know, building new streets, whether it's, you know, safer bicycle and pedestrian crossings, you know, can we use, you know, technology like traffic signal upgrades to, you know, better get, you know, better get better efficiency and safety out of existing corridors? Went through that kind of process, developed a large list of projects. Some of these probably look familiar to projects you've seen in past plans, but looked at these wide range and kind of tested them against those performance measures, saw which ones, you know, would kind of fit within that fiscal constraint that we looked at. And so, you know, and along the lines of that fiscal constraint, we did look at funding both local, state, and federal funding sources. And I think anybody who's been in the, you know, the transportation industry or just seen what's happened with overall costs, we are anticipating that costs will kind of outgrow or grow faster than our revenues will on the transportation side. So, in the long term, it may, you know, it'll be less and less affordable for some of our types of improvements. But looked at all the different funding levels through all the different sources of funding. And so, when we combined some of those primary needs with some of the restrictions that we've got on some of these federal funding sources, developed a fiscally constrained plan. And you can see, we've got kind of a combination of street maintenance, we've got a few new street projects, and then some bicycle and pedestrian and some safety projects. And you can see, this is that draft, fiscally constrained list that we were, you know, carrying through into the draft plan. And then, my last slide is just, you know, as we go through and did all this, we needed to make sure that we were meeting those federal requirements. So that last chapter really talks about, you know, what the federal requirements are and how this plan kind of, again, met the requirements from a federal perspective, but also was clearly, you know, tailored to kind of meet, you know, local, local needs. And that was the quick version. I can answer any questions you might have at this point.
Questions for Jason?
Jason, I have a question on EVs. First of all, this, I had a chance to read this report, and it was fascinating. I had no idea there's this much data and study out there. But on EVs, I think the comments in our reports were data by 2021, 2022 range, where percentage was increasing quite a bit in the demand. I think recently, in the last year or so, we're seeing a kind of decline in that. What do you think the current trend's going to be in the, in the future for, particularly for our region?
Did you, were you asking about the long-term trends?
Pardon?
Sorry, were you asking about long-term trends?
Yeah. I mean, I think we've seen a trend go the other way in the last year or so versus three or four years.
Yeah. I know, yeah, I've seen, within the last few months, I have seen that maybe there's been a little bit of a rebound with it, but, yeah, we did kind of seem to hit this kind of, you know, growth, 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 and then kind of a plateau within the last year. A lot of the, you know, the sources I'm seeing is that they think the technology's going to make it pretty cost-competitive, and so that it might be more widely adopted. You know, I guess I'm not an expert on EVs, but I do follow the industry, and so I, you know, in terms of the technology and where it's at, and, you know, can you get 400 or 500 miles on a charge, and, you know, and can you get a car that's, does that and is cost-competitive or even cheaper than, you know, a traditional gas-powered car? That's, that's the direction that I'm, that I understand we're heading, but again, you know how it is with technology, sometimes, sometimes things can change. you know how it is with technology, sometimes, sometimes things can change. But I think, I think the industry is planning for continued growth in that, in that segment.
Jason, just a overview question, because I occasionally drive it, usually on a weekly basis, dropping one of our kids off, and the other one drives to the new high school now, but was there a step back and maybe a deeper dive into some of the transportation studies around the, the new school? And then also, where the middle school is at, because there's a lot of congestion and roads that need to be fixed up in that area? Just, and then a follow-up question, was there a lot of comments and questions from the study that you did from the public?
We, we did get really good public input, especially through the online activities that we had. So, I'll, I'll answer your second question first. We, I checked, oh, we closed it, like I said, I think, I think it was last Wednesday was our last day for the public comment. I had pulled a report from our communications folks on it, and I thought we had about 30 or 40 comments through just this one period, and then we've had kind of continual engagement with the public throughout. So, I think it's been a pretty successful, you know, you know, engagement process with the public, and we've gotten a lot of, you know, kind of good comments. You know, honestly, a lot of that kind of helped shape this plan and what, what the priorities ought to be. In terms of, yeah, up on the, the north side, up there by the middle school and everything, that's actually one of the more interesting areas, because, you know, it's kind of, some of those roads kind of dead-end when you get up there, not too far past, like 27th. And so, some, some of the projects that you'll see in the plan actually talk about completing that grid up there, so extending Sunset, looking at 38th Street up there, completing some of those extensions. Just, and that actually did a pretty good job of, at one point in one of our early runs, we were looking, and 1806 was getting a lot of extra traffic, and it was basically because we hadn't filled that grid in. So, once, once you kind of complete that grid in, in North Mandan there, it, it kind of balances out the traffic a lot. But yeah, that is one of the big growth areas, as you, as you indicate.
Thanks.
Any other questions for Jason?
I have one more question. The report talked about the McKenzie Drive interchange or extension.
Yep.
How likely is that with the difficulty in getting funding in the future? Obviously, this would be one way down the road, correct?
Yeah. Yep. So, this is one of those that showed up in a few plans now. You know, it's not one of those that made the fit, what we call the fiscally constrained list, and it's one of those that would require more study. There's obviously, you know, impacts, not only from, you know, the, thinking about the environmental and crossing the Hart River and some of those kind of marshier areas maybe through there, but also just in terms of, you know, what, what would we need to do to, you know, that existing neighborhood, just to make sure that, you know, traffic levels and speeds and all that were at an acceptable level? So, that, that's one of those that, you know, does a good job of kind of like balancing traffic across the entire area, but I think it's one of those that would also require a quite a bit more study before, you know, it would be a project that would get implemented.
Any other questions?
Yeah, one more, Jason. Was there ever any mention in your study about the possibility of adding another bridge in the metro area, whether it be north or south across the Missouri?
Yep. Yep. On that, on that, that list of all the ideas, we did look at a northern bridge crossing, and that's still on the list, and I think it's one of those, again, it's a, it's a good idea, but it's one of those that could be a little difficult. You know, it's, it's, it's going to be expensive, it's going to take some more study. But yeah, I know there was a, a more detailed study done about, oh, 10, 15 years ago, it's probably closer to 15 years ago. So, that's one of those where there was a lot of talk on this study about at least trying to preserve the corridor for that, even if that's something that would be 20 years from now. With all the growth on both sides of the river, it would be something good to just kind of maybe revisit with a corridor study and kind of lock in and reserve the, the right-of-way, and make sure we can do it so that it's not, you know, it doesn't have driveways along it everywhere, and things like that. So, yes, a northern bridge study, or sorry, a northern bridge crossing is something that isn't on that fiscally constrained list that we talked about, but is going to be, continue to be in this plan as one of those ideas to consider further.
Any other questions? Thank you, Jason.
Thank you all, appreciate the questions.
Any questions for Kim? The ask of us today is to, they're looking for a recommendation to the city commission for the approval of this plan. So, we would be looking for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I would recommend to the city commission that they approve the Arrive 2050, the 2025 to 2050 Metropolitan Transportation Plan.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Smith, second by Commissioner Bookmiller, to recommend to the city commission consideration of the Arrive 2050, which is the 2025 to 2050 Metropolitan Transportation Plan. Any questions? With none, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Lenging?
Yes.
Commissioner Huber?
Yes.
Commissioner Mutter?
Yes.
Mayor Freilich?
Yes.
Commissioner Infeld?
Yes.
Commissioner McLean?
Yes.
Commissioner Bookmiller?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Hammond?
Yes.
Commissioner Gardner?
Yes.
Chair Robinson?
Yes. And motion is passed. We have nothing under other business tonight, and so with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Poll, same sign. We are adjourned. Thank you.